It is 6:30, and so it's just in time. We have a forum, so we can call the meeting of one of the public schools' school committee, call the meeting to order. A little note, thank you, with the weather was a little bit iffy today, but here we are. A few of our members could take it, so we will get started. I guess we'll start with carrying the speakers. Public visitors. Not for that portion right now. Also to note, although you know it if you're watching us on CTSB, that we are being recorded, and then this evening's meeting will also be shown. Refer to the CTSB channel to see what additional broadcasts will be available. Okay. And then that brings us to the board report of approval of the minutes of the December 11 meeting. Does anybody want to make a motion? Is it not for December?
You accept the minutes of December 11?
I have a second. Any discussion or comments or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Amy, I abstain. I wasn't there.
Now, the second item on our board report on the agenda was that we had tabled the review of the policy section K at the request of member Orrin Pass and others to go and discuss it. Megan, a member, Megan Kirby, who's the chair of the governance committee, was going to present that. We have one of the three members of that subcommittee here to request that we table it to the next meeting so she can present, which unless we have any objection, we could talk about it then. She has the ability to address the conversations. Their meeting also had to be postponed because of illness, so if we're comfortable putting that on to our next meeting, we will postpone that. Then I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Collins, for the superintendent's report.
All right. So this, the recognition that I'd like to make, we have the initial information back on the climate survey for staff and parents. And the response about would you recommend, would you recommend your school to a friend? The response at the Morris School couldn't, almost couldn't possibly have been higher. I think the leader of any school would be super proud to have and lead a team where folks feel so strongly about their organization. So, she's in the audience. Principal Kelly, I commend you publicly. Nicely done. Right. And then the Nordic Ski Lake Placid field trip? Europe?
We don't have a guest microphone today, so we can just be guys allowed. You come forward a little bit, and then actually these students pick up.
Yeah.
I can handle that. Thanks for seeing me tonight.
Thanks for coming.
We'd like to repeat our trip from last year. We moved the trip into February last year. For over 20 years, we've been going to pretty much the same place, but it had always been over the holiday break, and it was more for training purposes. We're finding as times change, it's been working better that we stay here and allowing families to kind of do their thing. And at the end of the season, bringing the group up to Lake Placid, we stay at the same hostel. We rent the entire basement. Well, it's a basement where all the bug beds are. And so making sure that there aren't any other guests for the kids. It holds up to 24. I don't anticipate 24 of our 43 kids being available for that because there's an Italy trip and there's a couple of trips that same break. So the dates are February 21st through that Saturday. It's a four-day excursion. We would appreciate the school committee seeing us, allowing us to take the school van. That helps get some of the kids up there. We may this year be looking at renting another van because there might be enough kids where we would want that type of transportation. We've got a few parents that are willing to help. One is one of our coaches, Rachel Welch. Parent Michael Ward helped us last year. And I believe this year, Dr. Elliott will be along with us again, who has helped us coach over the past years. And so they know the kids pretty well, and I feel real confident with that group. And last year, we were unable to get a female onboard with us, although Kim Ketchum was up there, so that was helpful. I think that covers it.
Any other questions, comments?
Just for the audience, because the trip is out of state, it requires the school committee approval and has my recommendation. What a great opportunity for them to be at an Olympic venue.
Yeah. Yeah. I absolutely love it.
Any other comments, questions, or a motion?
Make a motion to accept the question.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Hope you get some snow.
And then some rain, and then some stuff. I hope the light stay on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Next in your packet is the school choice. Oh, yes. Thank you. Yeah. So we have a number of community business partners who are generous to the school, and one of them is the Adams Bank. And following the Coach Lefave dedication, they came to learn that we were in need of a new scoreboard. And so they're going to donate $5,000 toward a new scoreboard. Very generous, and we thank them. Because it is a donation, it requires a vote of the school committee to accept it.
And just to review, Dr. Collins had reached out about putting this on the agenda and reviewed our policy, which suggests that we don't have any, the idea of naming rights for a monetary value is not something within our policies, but if an acknowledgement and a thank you to Adams Bank nearby, to the new scoreboard, which we very much need and appreciate, assuming that we approve that, would be something that would be within our policy to just say thank you to the Adams Community Bank for the donation, not as a, something more commercial than that. And that is something that fits within our policy. And so unless you have questions or has questions or concerns, we could entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of the donation of $5,000 from the Adams Community Bank for the purposes of getting us a new scoreboard for our basketball program.
Is that amount sufficient to buy the scoreboard?
He said nothing about how much a scoreboard costs.
I, it has to be close.
This isn't the first $5,000 for the $70,000.
I mean, it's a fair, it's a fair question, and I can't claim that we priced a scoreboard for $5,000. Our scoreboard has served us very well for many, many years in championships, but it's in, it needs to be repaired, and $5,000 will certainly cover the majority of the adequate needs.
Are you then that we accept the donation from Adams Bank of $5,000 to place the scoreboard?
That's it.
Second?
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And with our gratitude to the Adams Community Bank and for their generosity.
All right. Now on to school choice. So in your packet, you will notice that we have three grades that potentially at this point would have openings, obviously kindergarten, which we're looking at about 20 openings. Sixth grade would have two, and ninth grade, three.
And just as a summary, and again for people in the audience, generally speaking, we as a committee vote to approve or to continue our exercise of accepting school choice. Actually, I think as the state law is written, typically we would actually be more inclined to have to vote, but the policy would require that we vote to end school choice, but it's been our practice for quite some time now to have a vote to say we are going to continue being a school that accepts school choice students. And then although we leave to the discretion of the superintendent as his role in determining what our capacities are, we, over the last few years anyway, have engaged in a conversation to make it clear what we are endorsing as openings for school choice so that families can have a better understanding about what might happen. We often have long waiting lists. We have people that do want to have school choice into Lennox. I think it's helpful, and we set the policy last year to do this in January so that we can really be able to plan and also let families know what capacity we have to accept students into the school choice program. So I open it up to discussion or conversation about this proposal or Dr. Collins's presentation, and then we can entertain a motion if we go in that direction. If anybody has any questions or comments, the floor is yours.
Just a question about the kindergarten estimate for resident. Is that sort of a placeholder, or how firm is it, and on what basis? What's our sense at this point?
So because historically, there was a little bit of movement. We get it, we get it pretty close. We, we will usually have the drawing and then wait to see if there are any additional, if we have a little bit more or it falls a little bit short. And then we will notify folks again in August when our number is more firm to say, hey, we can take a few more to get to this number.
And my understanding, and thank you, Amy Nibisky, for typically tracking a lot of this, is the practice that Amy follows typically is to take a look at our preschool enrollment, the census of the town, births within the community, people who maybe chose not to. So any communication about the preschool program, as well as people who have identified their family as being potential kindergarteners. Obviously, we don't know if families decide to go with a private school, or if they move out of town, or if we have people moving in. So there's, there's some room there to make sure that we're not in overcapacity, but the general sense, and I believe this number is 25, is an estimate really up from what we know to be the case between preschool and census, but leaving a little bit of room. And then the 20 school choice slots, again, leaving room to add more if capacity isn't what we expect. Is that right?
There are currently 16 preschool students who will be coming into kindergarten, and five other residents of kindergarten age or next to all that are not in our kindergarten program. So there's 21 there if they all choose to, they always have somebody that moves in. So 25 is a conservative average per resident over the past few years.
So what's S, sorry? What's SP under the grade, under 12th grade?
So we have, we're obliged to, we're obliged to educate some students who are special services beyond 12th grade.
They're entitled to education up until age 22 if programming is appropriate and that's what they want. So sometimes we have students that are still part of our census that are in that designation.
So just, I'm just curious, I claim complete ignorance on this. So if I'm reading this right, our largest class currently is ninth grade, is that correct?
For next year, yes.
All right.
So it's currently, the current eighth grade class is large.
Okay, so, oh, okay. So I'm just curious, like, I'm looking at the percentages, which are kind of all over this, 30%, 44%, 55%. Like, how is it determined, like, three versus two at that, to virtual choice, to accept, to add to? I'm just wondering.
So there's communication with the counselors?
Okay.
Who have communication with the teachers about what can be, what can be accepted, what we feel is okay for that, that class moving forward? And this is, this is the number that we've got that we could, that we could accommodate.
It's always a fine balance between the percentage rate of grade and the percentages of all and the size of the class. So in sixth and ninth grade is when everyone wants in, and sixth and ninth grade is a very good time for us to take some students. So we try to focus on those areas. And ninth grade especially, after that, we rarely, we rarely have room for anyone. So you kind of want to get as many ninth graders, incoming ninth graders as you can. And then sixth grade as well. But incoming sixth graders would have another chance, maybe in the ninth grade as well. But after ninth grade, that's pretty much.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I understand that then.
Just for a little bit of history, in case anybody, you know, there's a lot of conversation about whether we have a policy or whether we set a number. I mean, the discretion and the judgment around how much we should allow for choice is really, at the discretion of the superintendent, we set policy on whether we accept choice or not, but obviously there's consequences if we come with some, you know, wild or crazy number. And previously, when I was on the committee, there was a lot of discussion and decision to kind of generally give a guideline to our superintendents to keep it that we, in any given class, we have more Lennox students than we do choice students. And we've kind of looked at this 40% number. It's not a hard pass number. It's not a policy, but I think the idea is that, except for we have some outlier years where we just have a very small number of students, and we have capacity to have more students come in, especially at the high school, to enable us to provide the programming that we've been providing. There are some documents on our website that do some deep analysis about what types of programs we wouldn't have or wouldn't be able to have in our school if we didn't have a robust population of students. And this seems to be what's working. So again, I think it's a combination that we leave to our superintendent and the administration team to think about the demands on faculty, staff, and the needs of the students in determining what's, what capacity is that. But I think there's a lot of guidelines too around, like, younger grades, smaller class sizes, as we move up into middle and high school, having a little bit of a larger cohort because, so that students can have peer groups and athletics and programs. But that's something that, as a group, we can address more deeply at a future time if that's what we want to do. Again, did any other questions or comments?
Yeah, well, I got just one quick question. So are these hard and fast entry points? Or let's say you had someone who wanted to enter at 11th grade, would we consider it? Or is this, we're saying kindergarten, sixth and ninth? Are we flexible?
We're, we are, we would be flexible to a, to a point. One of the, one of the problems with accepting someone in 11th or 12th grade is their ability to meet our graduation requirements.
Yeah, okay.
So we're concerned with that. But prior to that, yes, if, if it makes sense, and there was someone that, yes.
I guess my only other question would be just looking at the ninth grade. That is already by a pretty fair margin the largest class that we have, and looking past it, almost certainly the largest class we will have for the foreseeable future. Would just want to, I guess my question would be, how do you, what's the rationale for wanting to make that class even larger?
So one of the, one of the things that, that is, this is, these decisions are made in consultation. So the elementary numbers are made in consultation with Brenda. And the counselors in consultation with the teachers look at what, what do we, what do we feel that we can absorb, what would be an ideal number moving forward for this group? And, and I think also they take into consideration sometimes the chemistry of, of a group. And it was advised to us that if they would take three and go from 71 to 74, that it would, that it would work. I did not give any pushback or doubt, deeper, I certainly could.
Yeah. I mean, I don't doubt that we, that we could accommodate the additional students. My only concern would be, given that it is, they're sort of the pig in the python phenomenon, this is already the one that is most stretching our resources relative to how we are otherwise scaled, and we're, we are further stretching it. So at the end of the day, you know, 74 isn't going to break anything that 71 can handle, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not sort of by default assuming, well, ninth grade is one of the places we add people, so what number do we want to add when this year might be a fairly unique time to say that there's no reason to add anybody, we're not going to have another 71 for the next, the next 10 years.
And to that point, there is, there is no pressure. If the in is full, the in is full, and we, right. So we do sort of take heavily the advisement of, you know, the folks that know the makeup of the class best.
The guidance department and principal are consulting. It looks like we could go over the average, but any, any class could really be that size if it was defined.
The sibling, are any of these representative of siblings? So for those who don't know, we do also, we have by law, we're allowed to prioritize siblings.
Ninth grade, so yeah. I could be wrong, but I don't, I know we have an eighth grade.
The only, the only preference that Massachusetts allows in their procedure is, as you've mentioned, for the sibling of a choice student who's already in, would already be in a school district. And if there were more siblings than there were slots, there would be a sibling lottery before there'd be a general lottery.
So having said that, again, not trying to micromanage, but if we have, we could potentially have a sibling on a waiting list unless we open up to the one slot in the eighth grade?
Yes. The, that sibling came to being after these numbers.
Not trying to call anyone out, just really, well, I think that's exactly why, and I have some, Amy very kindly offered some wording of what's been done in the past, but we can word any motion, but the idea is that in the end, we also defer to the discretion of our superintendent as long as the decision doesn't particularly strain anything within the context of what we're doing, so.
And this, the spirit, which, which I completely support, is that you don't want to unnecessarily split siblings between school districts if you don't have to. Having them in the same school is, is beneficial. I look at that on a case-by-case basis.
So if there's not further discussion, and certainly the motion can be anything, but we would be looking for a motion to authorize a superintendent to open school choice for the coming year as recommended of kindergarten grades nine and 10, or as he deems appropriate, which does give him that discretion.
Maybe sixth, grade six and nine?
What did I just say? Six, K, six and nine? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I was looking right at the number. Oh, no, there's a 10 in there.
That looks like I copied last year's, and I didn't correct it, sorry.
In the event, if anyone's inclined to make a motion, or...
I'll make a motion if, if not for anything else discussion, or I'll make a motion to accept the school choice enrollment review as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, Amy, for keeping such great track of this very important information.
Staffing update. As you are aware, we have, and particularly Mr. Kelly, our director of student services, has been working diligently to try to find a special expansion para. And we had a little bit of a false start. Somebody came and didn't stay. So we have been advertising for the position for quite a while, and now he's found a organization that will do a para contract with us to get us through the rest of the year so that students can have the service that they require. So I commend him on finding this and coming up with a solution that will get us through the year. It is not, it's not a substitute for hiring a para, but we've just found ourselves in a spot where there aren't, there aren't enough candidates to fill the position.
You have the services you need, right?
Yes, we will. Yes.
Thank you.
And...
How's that work, though? How's that contract work? Are they bringing someone from outside the community? If there's no one in the community to, that we can find? How's that?
Mr. Kelly, is in the audience right here, and the specifics of how this works?
There's, there are a number of different agencies out there that, that have people in their, on their staffing that are already qualified candidates. So there's a number of these different agencies. Some are, some are not necessarily local agencies, but they have access to local employees. We'll always have an arrangement with that particular agency. They then, you know, have an agreement with us if we make one through a contract to work with that employee, that individual. Oftentimes, they are like from this area. So they're local to Lake Pittsfield or the surrounding Berkshire area places. They're certainly not somebody who can't come here. And, you know, it's sort of like, it's an alternative when you really can, you know, it's only when you can't find somebody after exhausting all the resources that we, that we look to do this, obviously, go outside of, you know, hiring somebody on our own staff. We obviously would prefer to hire somebody that would be part of our own staff, hired from the town limits. But when we cannot find that, we still have services that are sort of ongoing that cannot be fulfilled. We do have an obligation to fulfill those.
Sure.
I guess I asked a question. We recently looked at the substitute policy and compared them to other districts and, you know, for recruiting purposes and wanting to be competitive. Do you have a sense that, you know, with the difficulty that we've had trying to fill this position, are we, you know, comparable with other school districts as far as pay? Do you have a sense of why this has been such a difficult?
We did bump, bump up the pay.
We did.
So the pay, I believe, is thoroughly competitive or comparable to our people in surrounding areas. The problem is we're also in the same pool. So if you look around in the neighboring places, right in the Berkshires, you're probably, at any point in time, I think even Pittsfield has a big bill board up right now that says looking for this number of things, right? And probably professionals on there. So we're in the same, like, pool for those people, and there are only so many people who are doing those jobs. My suspicion is we, some people decided, just like as far as teachers or other educators, that they were not, you know, when COVID came around, that they were going to do something different, and some people just didn't come back to education. So we lost some people, I think, to that phenomenon. You know, since we rebounded, I feel like hopefully that's on a swing of where the people are going to come from, but we are still competing.
We are, we're well positioned. We, right now, we're, I think, maybe one of the three in the, three tied for the three highest in the, in the county. And so when the pool comes back, we're positioned well to, to get them, but right now, there just is not the pool regardless of this, you know, with the exception of, you know, some agencies that have made a business out of this shortage.
I was just asking, I didn't know if there was any way to be more creative or a better offer, or something. No, okay.
No, I I genuinely believe that this is a very attractive choice, whether you're a para or a teacher. But right now, the chest isn't sufficient.
I will say that we we did, we did make some hires. We're at the beginning of the year, we had vacancies and we hired some some great people, actually, some people probably, you know, with some qualifications that are sort of beyond that, but that people were really looking interested in being here. So it's it's been real benefit for us, for those people kind of stepping into those positions. And some of them have retired, generally come back, have retirement, it's an educator, wanted to stay in education. I think we've really kind of done a good job at sort of pulling in some people. It's just at this point, it's sort of exhausted.
Do they have a transition, these contract employees? Will they ever transition into a current position?
There's there's sort of like legalities in contracts usually that kind of prevent a person from sort of like going right over from. So most of them have some sort of time period, it could be a year or fifteen months before they, if they were interested in Linux, they would have to be beyond that to sort of then come aboard and be hired as a Linux employee. So there's usually contingencies that are set up in contracts.
Okay, thank you.
And next is the FY twenty five budget overview presentation. This is the first of several school community meetings where we will be addressing the budget. So this is the overview presentation. So the budget process to date, you see on this slide, a lot goes into creating this. And it's numerous meetings with building and department folks, identifying staffing needs, changes, and looking at initiatives. We look at needs versus wants, the all of the contractual column movements, potential retirements that we know of. We look at the inflation projections and then identify special needs services that will be coming. I mentioned contractual obligations. We have the certified professional contract, which is in year three of three. Custodial contract, year three of three. Para professional, this is fourth, FY twenty five, three of three, three of three. Professional food service administrative assistance, year two of three. And then our student transportation contract, we we know the two point five percent increase in year three of five. And if we look at the overview operating summary of all programs, comparing in the first column, FY twenty four with the next column to the right, FY twenty five, then the next one is the changers, the actual changes in dollars. And then that represented as a percent change. You can see all all programs with the change being one million, two hundred and thirty thousand and sixty or eight point seven four percent. And then accessing the stabilization fund that is designed for incidences such as unscheduled special education needs that can occur outside of the district. So that would, we would take one hundred and fifty thousand out of that account. Then the next line below it is the new FY twenty five number minus the one fifty. And then there are receipts, school of choice, we get some tuition students in as well. And that would be added as in addition to the stabilization for two million, one hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars for a net budget of twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty two thousand, two hundred and sixty six, which in change in dollars is eight hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred, which is seven point two percent. So looking at the level service, we have contractual obligations that are not discretionary. These are obligations that we have in salaries, in transportation, and other contracts such as software and and special education. And then looking at also the inflation increases in supplies, services, software. So even if nothing changed, there would have to be an increase just to maintain level services with 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 these. So there's the level service and then there's the the value added. So we're looking to have improvement in curriculum and student support. So we take our elementary, our elementary principal, our one point oh FTE means one full time person. We would revise that, subtract one half of an FTE from the elementary principal and add one half to be the curriculum instruction and assessment director. So for that, there is there is no change. It still equals one full time person, one FTE, full time equipment. And this would get us curriculum alignment in pre-K through eight, district assessment coordination, data analysis, professional development oversight and coordination. We would be looking to do a number of a number of the things that are happening right now, pre-K through five, and add them next year for pre-K through six, the year after that, pre-K through seven, the year after that, pre-K through eight. And then we would be looking to add an elementary assistant principal to help with staff observations and evaluations, the building management, and also to have a succession plan. So the idea of this would be that this person would ultimately be the person who would take over the assistant, would take over the elementary principalship. And we'd be, this helps solve human resource. This would shift human resources from town capacity to having our office be able to handle and be the point person for all of our employees with the human resource needs. So adding a district facilities coordinator with a stipend, so no additional people, but the selected person would have a stipend. They'd be able to do project management, coordinate purchasing for costs, cost savings, economy of scale, coordinated services. And this would come off of the things that the assistant superintendent and and her assistants are doing right now and free them up, free up their capacity to then be HR. So this actually would would solve two issues. One, us being able to handle all of our all of our HR needs and also coordinate between our facilities. So the operating budget increases. So for the level service, we have special education obligations, contractual salaries, the inflation for services and supplies. We went into COVID with school adjustment counselor salaries on ESAR. ESAR ESAR will end after September of twenty twenty four. And so to keep the level service, they would go on to the general budget. And then our contractual transportation and and all of these as percentage of the increase, not the overall budget, is eighty five percent. That's eighty five percent of the increase, not of the entire budget. And that's one million, forty five thousand, six hundred and sixteen. And then the value added piece would be the curriculum assessment and instruction director, the facilities coordinator, the assistant principal at the elementary school, plus textbooks, instructional equipment and field trips. This would be fifteen percent of the operating budget increase at one hundred and eighty four thousand, four hundred and forty four dollars. So this shows the breakdown, starting with this year, the twenty FY twenty four budget, adding the level service, adding the value added, the improvements that we just discussed. Then there's the special education out of district expenses added to that, deducting the stabilization fund that is designed for those situations as they arise to end up with the FY twenty five initial budget. And this is gross, including stabilization of fifteen million, one hundred and forty nine thousand, two hundred and sixty six. Now we look at the FY twenty four and the initial FY twenty five expenditures broken down by program. So again, you can see the 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 first column speaks to the elementary school, the LMHS, student services, other services, which would include five oh fours and English language services and such. And then technology, central administration, operations and maintenance, and then the reserve contingency. So the next column is the, these are the numbers for this year, FY twenty twenty four. And then our initial budget here for FY twenty twenty five. The next line is the the difference between the two, the variance. And then that is indicated as a percentage. You'll notice the you'll notice that the student services has a high bump. And again, this is why we're accessing the stabilization fund. It's because we have, from from time to time, there are needs that students have that are that exceed what can happen in district. And so students end up being placed in outer district settings. And so that's that, there's a big jump there, you can see that. And then also you see there's a a jump with the central administration and the half curriculum instruction assessment person is is going to be on the on the district payroll. Yeah. And then this is the same thing in a in a in a pie chart, just to have a visual of of this, to see instructional is sixty two point five percent of of the budget. And student services represents another twenty percent. So eighty two point five percent of the budget is instructional and student services. And then the others are the others, the smaller slices. And for the folks at home, if you can't, if you can't see that, the technology is the two point seven slice. The administration is the six point three slice of the pie. The operation and maintenance is the seven point eight slice. And the point seven percent is reserve and contingency. So this is comparing the, again, a visual to compare, this is the gross budget, but this is the proposed FY twenty twenty five budget compared to this year's twenty twenty four budget for each one of these. So the first one, I I don't know if they can read it at home, but the first one is five oh four and English language services. The next one over is the reserve. And then technology, central administration, operation and maintenance, special education, Morris and LMMHS. And you can see the the blue is this year and the beige and gray is next year. And then the projected revenue accounts used to offset the operating budget. And again, with FY twenty four, what was used and what's being proposed to use in FY twenty twenty five and the variance between the two. So we get, we just spoke about the school community approved school choice. With school choice comes revenue with every student. The sending district pays five thousand dollars for every school choice student that we that we bring in. And we use that money to offset costs while maintaining while maintaining a reserve. The next is tuition receipts. We receive tuition. One of our, one of our neighboring districts has an elementary school and the students get to opt out to where they're going to go for their secondary experience. And we're one of them, and so we have a tuition agreement with them. And we receive tuition when those students come here. And then miscellaneous, we have, we get money for the use of facilities, for renting out the Dufflin Theater and such. And then something is called circuit breaker. The state puts in a protection because there is there is no way for a school district to always predict exactly what the special education costs are going to be, what students can can move into the district or be diagnosed with significant needs that require significant services that we are happy to meet but are required to meet as well. And so the state has a circuit breaker, so you don't you don't sort of break the bank. But you you typically will receive that money the following, you'll receive the circuit breaker money the following year to offset the unexpected expenses that you have. And then we have the the total lines. And again, tapping into the stabilization fund because we have some unexpected special education expenses that that we are obliged to obliged to provide. And then, as I mentioned before, the inflationary pieces, this is looking back over five years. If we take twenty nineteen as a base, the solid line is our budget and the dotted line is inflation. So if you look, starting with the base, our budget outperformed the inflation in twenty twenty. They met in twenty twenty one. And then inflation outpaced our budget in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So if nothing changed from the the amount of money we have, the cost of providing these services and materials and supplies has gone up more than in the in that five year period, more than the budget. You know, ideally, the budget would, the budget would meet or exceed inflation. So in summary, the levels, we're offering a level service plan to to continue to meet the needs of the students in the same way that we are doing. And we're also looking to add improvements in curriculum, student support, employee support and in the facilities. We're going to meet all contractual obligations. We, this budget proposal. This budget proposal reflects the costs associated with personnel changes, provides improved professional development opportunities for our educational staff, coordinates stewardship of the facilities, coordinated stewardship of the facilities. And there's, if you go to the next slide, it doesn't represent the employee retirement benefits, but the Berkshire Health Board Group is going to meet at the end of this month to determine the level of increase in health insurance premiums. Salaries are updated as column movements, retirement intentions are, as they are received that we know of now, and other budget item costs as reviewed. What's going to happen next is there'll be a presentation by the elementary school, student services, technology, and the administration portions of the budget for January 22. The secondary budget will be on the 29th, and then the capital plan on February 12th. And the 26th, the school committee deliberates on the FY 2025 requested budget. On March 18th is a public hearing and the FY '25 budget vote by the school committee. And then May 2nd, the annual town meeting where the budget goes to the holders.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. All right. So questions, comments, discussion?
I have none at this point.
I got a question. Sure. Just help me understand, on the elementary principal splitting.
Yes.
Time, I guess, half for curriculum development, that will stage over three years, and then half position remaining as elementary principal? Just kind of doing the numbers, I look at a half FTE being opened up as opposed to a full FTE being opened up for the elementary assistant principal. Can we just kind of address?
Yep. No, very good question. So the, when I arrived and this part of onboarding and doing a needs assessment, it had come to my attention that both human resources and curriculum coordination had been something that has been brought up for a while, for multiple years. Ms. Fulkowski and I looked at the cost of bringing on a curriculum person, and it was a bit too much. It was more than we could do at this stage. So in conversations with the principal, Principal Kelly has done an outstanding job with the curriculum and the assessment and instruction role. And we perhaps weren't, haven't been using her to her full potential. So through conversations with her, it evolved that she could do half of this, half time, still as the principal, half time as the curriculum director, adding the, starting to add the middle school, so adding the sixth grade, so pre-K through six. At the same time, right now, there's a head teacher model. We would suspend that, we'd come back to it, but we would suspend it. We would bring on an elementary assistant principal with the idea that this person would ultimately take her place. So three years, she takes on sixth grade. So now she's pre-K through six, the next year, pre-K through seven, the next year, pre-K through eight. Then when she goes to take on the high school, it becomes a full-time, it becomes a full-time position. At that point, three years of mentoring and on-the-job training, the assistant principal steps into principal role of the elementary school. They're a full-time assistant principal, they step into a full-time principal role. We bring back the head teacher model, we don't replace with another assistant principal. And then we are, we've got time. We also have a succession plan. The staff will know this person, and as Principal Kelly's role as the CIA director increases and she takes on more of those grades, that the hope would be simultaneously, this assistant principal would be taking on more and more responsibilities. So the first time, she's added one grade. But she's going to be mentoring and bringing along, bringing along the assistant. The next year, she's got two grades, this person's a little more independent, she's coaching them, right? The third year, hopefully, they're doing a lot of that work with her as a guide on the side. And we think this gets us to the place where we want to be in a pretty cost-effective way to make it happen. Plus, we have the benefit of the succession planning and no disruption in elementary service programs. The person, by the time they take over, is going to know how the well-oiled machine of the Moors sort of runs.
So is there, are we filling a need then, a perceived need in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades for this, for curriculum that doesn't exist at the moment? Or are we shifting curriculum responsibilities from existing person into this?
So the hope would be that the fifth graders who are leaving would then go into a sixth grade that would have a similar system of benchmarking and that we would have some alignment? This doesn't, you know, take away from department heads or coordinators, right? But this is somebody who's going to have the big view about a student that enters in preschool and goes through, by the time it's done, to 12th grade and has an aligned curriculum, a thoughtful, with intentionality of what happens. Even just academic vocabulary becomes the same, it's a benefit. Students aren't going from one room to another and people are calling something from one grade to the next grade, using similar benchmarks so that from year to year, we can look and say, well, we're using a similar benchmark, we can see the progress we're making instead of it being some other standardized test.
And then after your three, the ideas expanded.
Yes.
K through 12.
Right. Exactly.
And at that point, you would have had your sixth graders or your ninth graders, your ninth graders, your tenth graders.
They never miss a beat. So the current fifth graders would be able to have this position during this coordination their entire career. And every student below them as well, so pre-K through four as well.
And then just one other question was, it just had to do with the HR, the facilities coordinator stipend position. Can you just explain a little bit where we're seeing the need for this? You know, what's occurring in the organization that's prompting a need to create this stipend?
There's a couple of things that are happening simultaneously. One is that the current HR person for the town was split with the town of Lee, and Lee has pulled out of that agreement. Second, right now, what happens is an employee will reach out automatically, naturally, to us. We go to the, we go to the town, ask questions at the town. The town responds, we answer the questions. And where our folks could be the point, and it would be one point that you get immediate responses. Not someone who's working half-time, but somebody who's full-time, they can get responses seven days a week. It would be our person dealing with the insurance company and such as, again, as point person. Think that if you're an employee, it's going to be nice to just deal with the same person and have very speedy response.
Anybody else have questions? And, okay, I think now is the time for us to move to just an update of our subcommittees. I see governance and leadership, and I guess, am I correct? Megan said you guys weren't able to meet.
We regrettably had to cancel our meeting last week, so we're in the midst of trying to reschedule.
And you're continuing the policy review, and we'll have presentations when you're ready. Right, okay, HR?
Human resources met yesterday, I guess. Focused primarily on what Dr. Collins was just describing with respect to the new roles in the administration and with the assistant principal, making sure we have job descriptions for those. Assistant principal in particular will need to be posted. Ultimately, those will come for the school committee's approval as essentially the creation of a new position and new job descriptions within the district. And we will meet again at the beginning of February.
Thank you. Teaching, learning, and culture, we met on December 13th. And actually, similar to what, as Dr. Collins described, we had the benefit of Principal Kelly's presentation about, really, this has been a multi-year work of subcommittees and trying to work through where we are with curriculum and data and how we are assessing whether students are learning, what is helping them, what is not. Are there cohorts of students who are struggling to meet targets? And that's very data-driven, and Principal Kelly's very focused on that. And so she explained some of the work that had gone on in the past and described to us some of the approaches that she'll be, that she looks to do, assuming everything goes forward, to be able to plan for, I have here, formative assessments and summative assessments. And then, you know, we discussed, we had an opportunity to hear from her a little bit more about the ways in which this role would really benefit the students of Lenox and help us to really have a better sense of ensuring, actually, that all students are learning and providing them with services. I think this intersects also with Brian Kelly's role as providing services for students. Sometimes we jump in and do a lot of assessments and provide services versus if we're really looking to tailor curriculum on an ongoing basis and ensuring that students learn. So we were able to learn more about that process and how that all works. And Dr. Collins was also able to report. We were hoping to hear a little bit more about the parent and faculty surveys. At that point, they were not concluded, so we're going to put that on our agenda for our meeting, which will be February, excuse me, no, January 24th at 5:00. That's kind of where we are with that. And then finance?
Finance, you saw mostly the product of what the finance subcommittee has been discussing, working closely with Dr. Collins and Melissa on this initial budget framework. We've met with the town finance committee, and I think those have been very productive discussions. They've been very supportive. And we will next meet also at the beginning of February, which will be after all of the specific presentations from the departments, with a chance to sort of regroup before we have to have the final version, the version that the school committee as a whole will formally deliberate on.
Great, thank you. And school building?
School building, nothing new to report. Haven't had another meeting at this time. The next one is scheduled for January 18th.
Great, thank you. So that brings me to the end of our agenda. Unless everybody has anything else important, we have our next retreat on the 17th. Dr. Collins and I have been working on our agenda for that. We'll be setting something up by the end of the week and hoping we'll have a chance to dig in and do some great work at that. And then our budget meetings will resume again at our next meeting later in January.
Great.
So I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
Oh, second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.